Or maybe even watching us in Catalina. Um, at our Avalon School. And, uh, that is something special that we've added. I think it's been a couple of months now. Yeah. Um, let's see. So I will ask our Board Secretary to take role and establish a quorum.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
And student member Arroyo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And I will ask our Student Board Member Alana to lead us in the pledge.
Begin.
I understand we have, uh, someone who wishes to speak on items not listed on the agenda. And just to confirm, we don't have anyone who wishes to speak to items on the agenda.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, oh, yep, we should do that. Um, so, uh, we need a motion to approve, uh, adopt the agenda, I should say.
Sure move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? And our Student Board Member with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, we can invite our speaker to the podium.
Thank you. Jerlene, if you can come to the podium.
Jerlene Tatum, L.B. USD parent. Congratulations, Board Member and Otto, on your next term. I came tonight just to remind you all of your responsibilities as you step into this new term. According to the California School Board Association Governance and Policy Page, citizen oversight of local government is the cornerstone of democracy in the United States. School Board members are elected, as we're here to celebrate that tonight, and entrusted with governing a community's public schools. The role of the school board is to ensure that school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, priorities of their communities. Boards fulfill this role by performing five major responsibilities. Setting direction, establishing an effective and efficient structure, providing support, ensuring accountability, providing community leadership as advocates for children, the school district, and public schools. These five responsibilities present core functions that are so fundamental to a school's accountability to the public that they can only be performed by elected governing body. So as you step into this new term, please keep those things in mind, and I would like to make a few requests. Please refrain from accepting contributions from folks that you will be voting on at a meeting. Please work towards not having conflicts of interest that prevents you from properly serving the community and voting on items, financial items, that are crucial to the well-being of this district. Myself and others, we will be here and we will be present to remind you of your roles and responsibilities as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other?
There's no other ones.
No? Okay. Then, in that case, we will get to item number seven-one, Administration of Oath of Office, um, for members of District Two and District Four. We'll start with District Two. So, um, as we set up the room for the oath of office, Mr. Miller, is there someone you'd like to introduce? Someone who is going to be swearing you in?
And I hope this isn't out of order, but if I can ask for a huge favor. My father flew in from Dallas and he's running a little late.
So the favor might be that we start with District Four?
If it's all the same to you.
It is all the same to me. So I don't mind doing that. Mr. Otto, um, we will start, we will, we will start with District Four. Would you like to introduce the special person that you have chosen to swear you in?
Yes. I've asked and she has accepted, the President of Long Beach, Cal State Long Beach, Jane Close Connolly, who is here.
Fabulous. Then, um, I'll, I'll ask her to step forward and then we will proceed with the oath of office.
Don't I go up?
Yes, you, you need to be, um, at the podium as well.
President Connolly, we, we've never actually done this before, so you'll be our first. Just playing President Connolly.
I've actually never done this before, so it's my first.
I got it.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay. Please repeat after me.
Please repeat af- oh, sorry.
I say your name, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Doug Otto, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will bear.
True faith.
True, true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation.
That I take this responsibility freely, without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. There's a lot of people to, to, to say, uh, thank you to. First, to Dr. Connolly, who I have known for a very long time and have been, uh, involved with in education issues in Long Beach. To, um, uh, Representative from Taub that's here, um, and, uh, thank you very much for, uh, for being here. Uh, to my family, my, uh, I don't know where this got started pretty quickly, so, um, I think the only one that's here so far is my wife, who is always here. You know, I've been telling people that for five years, my wife has been saying, "You've got to retire. You, you've just got to stop doing this and we, you know, we, uh, we, we need to slow down." So, um, when she came home last week and said, "I've just been elected President of the Rotary Club," I said, you know what I said to her? "You have to retire." She's, uh, she is my rock and, uh, does, uh, keeps me in line, which is not easy. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, we've been married for a very long time. We have five kids, nine grandkids, um, all doing very well and, uh, except for one thing, they're usually not, you know, they're usually not this far off, not on time. We have a couple that are going to show up here. The two that aren't quite here yet, but that will be home, that are our grandsons, are both students at, uh, Wilson High School. And, um, they are both involved in athletics. Um, one was the most valuable player on the freshman, sophomore. On the froshoff, uh, football team. And, uh, then, uh, and, and they were running cross-country and track. And, uh, uh, we looked at them and said, "You're too small to play football. You're about a hundred and fifty pounds and I don't think that's going to work." So they decided to pursue with the same rigor, um, the, uh, the pursuit of track. Last year, the, uh, the younger one, who was a sophomore, uh, ran the eight, eight-hundred meter, uh, race and he finished second in the state as a sophomore. Ran a one-fifty-point-two, for those of you who know anything about that. And, uh, he, uh, was just a week ago invited to run in the Nike Invitational in New York City. So we're all going to New York, uh, in the very, very near future. And his older brother is just a smidgen behind him, uh, in, in his times as well. But we are very, very proud of what they do and what they're getting from the Long Beach Unified School District. I also wanted to thank Superintendent Baker for all the, uh, help that she's given me during my first term and, and now we've had many great conversations. And indeed, the, the leadership team here that, uh, answers my questions and rolls her eyes only periodically. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's been, uh, a, a great opportunity to learn things about K through twelve education. As many of you know, I served sixteen years on the Long Beach Community College District Board of Education. And when I was approached about the possibilities of, uh, running for this seat, I said, "You know, I think I'm done." And, uh, and I, I said, "But I'll talk to my wife." And my wife said, "I don't want you at home." Uh, and I, uh, am concerned because Long Beach is so dependent on the Long Beach Unified School District. Uh, as I have said many times here, it's the glue that kind of holds this community together. And, uh, John Meyer, whose seat I, uh, took afterward for his retirement, came to my house and said, "I, I really would like it if you would run for my seat." And I spent a lot of time with John, learning what I could. So that was, uh, and here I am. And here I am for, at the beginning of a, of a second term. In nineteen eighty-three, um, during Ronald Reagan's first term as President of the United States, he created the National Commission on Excellence and Education, which wrote the acclaimed report, "A Nation at Risk: The Imperative for Education Reform," at its the following. "We must rededicate ourselves to the reform of our education system for the benefit of all, old and young alike, affluent and poor, majority and minority, leaving, uh, learn- learning is the indispensable investment required for success in this, the new information But that rededication must be for everyone and not just for some." The report continues to say, "We do not believe that a public commitment to excellence and educational reform must be made at the expense of a strong public commitment to the equitable treatment of our diverse population. The twin goals of equity and high-quality schooling have profound and practical meaning for our economy and our society, and we cannot permit one to yield to the other in principle or in practice. To do so would deny young people their chance to learn and live according to their aspirations and abilities. It would lead to generalized accommodation to mediocrity in our society on the one hand and the creation of an undemocratic elitism on the other. Our goal must be to develop the talent of all to their fullest extent." Those words were not said at that time for what we would eventually come to realize here would be our excellence and equity policy, but they stand, excuse me, they stand clearly as a foreshadow of that policy as we have adopted it and as we work so hard at it. So, the question is, forty years later, how are we doing? Are we doing a pretty good job with that? And the answer is, in California, not so good. In California, the, uh, status of California students meeting or exceeding standards in English language arts is only forty-seven percent. Um, the age, um, the age of students meeting or exceeding standards in mathematics, the subject we most rely on to protect our national and economic security, is only thirty-five and a half percent. That means, and get this picture, that one-point-three-million California students, or only about one-third of our students, are proficient in math. To put that in perspective, one-point-three-million non-proficient students would fill eighteen-point-five football stadiums, exceeding seventy thousand people. Uh, and, uh, and that's a lot of people who are not proficient. While eighty-six percent of California high school students graduate, only, uh, only forty-five percent meet the requirements for admission to the California State University system or the UC system, and that's unacceptable, too. The good news for us is Long Beach Unified School District does a much better job at that, and we are proud of what it is that we do, but it means, doesn't mean that we can't improve and do better, and that's among my goals going forward. But, you know, we're, we're facing very difficult political times right now. We don't know what the future is and it's pretty hard to, to even speculate about what's going to happen. We, we worry that with politics going in a certain direction and focused on immigration, that many of our student families may self-deport, which are, is already happening, I know. And, and even if they don't self-deport, there's, they're, they're staying, uh, they're, they're not staying dedicated to their student, to their studies and things that need to be done. We worry that data required for, uh, for authorities to make decisions on financial aid in California, um, uh, may be made available to those looking to immigration status, thereby creating or even, or even be able to, uh, being able to create disincentives for our students to continue their education or even to concentrate on their studies because of the possibilities of the future. And even something that's not been successful in California for a long time, the idea of vouchers as a way of people going to schools other than public schools, uh, is in ascendency again. And I worry about whether that's going to get more purchase now in California because of the politics of what's going on. I believe strongly in public education. I think that, um, California has done a great job since, uh, in, in public education, I'm a product of it. I'm a product of the Long Beach Unified School District. I went to Patrick Henry Elementary School and Marshall Junior High School and Milliken High School, and it prepared me for my career. And, uh, and I see the same with many, many, uh, people that it's, that it's done an excellent job. It has an exceptional, um, history of providing what it is that students need for, to be successful in life, one way or the other. And, um, I think it's very important that we reaffirm our commitment to public education. And, uh, that is my commitment, uh, going for, going forward here. As I said at the beginning, and I've said it many times, I believe that the Long Beach Unified School District is the glue that holds Long Beach together. I think about what Long Beach would be like if Long Beach Unified School District wasn't here. People, when I, when I graduated from school in Chicago and decided to come back here, everybody said, "Oh, that's because it's so cold in Chicago. You don't want to stay in Chicago. That's horrible weather." But you know what? I came back here because it was a great place to raise a family, it was a great place to become involved and be ahead. We're a city of a half a million people, and yet, um, what I saw when the pandemic hit was that, um, people were going to school boards all over California and complaining about what was going on and what needed to be done. But when they came to the Long Beach Unified School District Board meetings, they just, you could see that they trusted us. You could see that they wanted to do what it took to make us successful. And, uh, uh, we are doing that. Uh, I'm particularly impressed by the strategic planning process that we've gone through, that we've, uh, are assuring the success of ourselves going into the future because of the work that we're doing. I want to continue and help in that work, and I thank you for, um, putting the confidence in me to do another term, uh, on this board, and I will give it my all. Thanks.
Before we move on with District Two, because I think it's, yeah, we're good, I just wanted to recognize, uh, some of the, uh, elected officials in the room. I noticed we have Mr. Udo Walkentuck, um, from Long Beach City College Board of Trustees. We also have Laura Dowd, our City Auditor. Don McIntosh, our City Attorney. And, um, and friends and family, we're glad you're here. And, and, yes, but he has a special introduction. And yes, I did gloss over Mr. Al Austin, because he's going to be introduced by our colleague, Mr. Miller. He has the honor of, um, swearing in Mr. Miller.
And to be clear, you could never gloss over the Al Austin. That's, that's my big brother, man. I am honored and privileged to have the eighth District Council Member, Mr. Al Austin, doing my swearing in. I just feel very, very blessed to have you. So, you ready to do this, brother? All right.
And as he's walking up, I'll take this special privilege to, um, just say how grateful I am that, that the school district is located in the Grade Eight District. So, um, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name?
I, Eric Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the-
That I, oh, go ahead. That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any.
Mental.
Mental.
Reservation.
Reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duty upon which I am about to enter.
And to discharge the duty upon which I'm about to enter.
There you go. Congratulations.
So it's been a long time since I've been on this side of the dais. But, um, I want, I want to say thank you, guys. Uh, it's been, uh, four years. Four years that I've been in this role of, um, the District Two Representative, and it hasn't been easy. But I know that, uh, with any, uh, successful organization, with any, uh, successful football team like the Chargers, it takes good people. And so, uh, I first wanted to thank you, the admin team, for all of your support over the past four years, uh, all the great work and all the care that you put towards taking care of our littles. I know how big your roles are and how cumbersome they are, now being to work, uh, behind the scenes with you all, and I'm just very, very appreciative of them. Uh, and to Dr. Joe Baker in particular, uh, your job is hard, very hard, and you do it with grace, you do it, uh, with class, and you're able to continue to do this great work in spite of everything that you've had going on in your life. And I want you to know that there is somebody who's shining down on you, looking down at you right now, and is very proud of the work that you're doing and the support that you provide to us six up there at the dais. So thank you. Uh, to my colleagues, uh, thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your commitment. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that this job does not go to the, uh, to the weak, as, uh, we, behind closed doors and in front of the public, have to talk about some really tough things, uh, some really tough decisions. And with all of us having, uh, young people who are either in this district or have gone through this district, we understand the importance of the decisions that are being made from our positions. And so with that, I just wanted to thank you all for your support over these past four years and, uh, for the next four years. And to these people behind me, it feels a little weird talking backwards here, uh, but, uh, yeah, is it okay if I turn it around? All right. There we go. Um, I got a lot of loved ones here, a lot of loved ones. Uh, I first want to thank my big brother, uh, Mr. Al Austin, as, uh, he has been, um, my mentor for the past fifteen years. He has seen my career progression. He has been there through a lot of tough decisions, uh, ranging from, uh, the decision to go into public office, to job opportunities, to when I was going to propose. He was there, uh, and he gave guidance, and I appreciate, uh, every bit of advice that you've provided me along the way. Thank you. Ms. Robinson, having my back along the way, um, and supporting one of my largest initiatives, which is supporting our black students. And so I just appreciate all the great work that you've done for the kids in the math collaborative. As, uh, as, uh, an African-American male who loves his math, as a previous architect, um, I recognize that it's programs like yours that provide, uh, the foundation for them to make the larger vocational decisions in the future, so thank you for that. Uh, I have some of my biggest supporters here, my folks from Taub, who held me down during election season, uh, but more importantly, they've supported our teachers. Uh, our teachers are our frontline employees. They are the folks who talk with our young people, who work with our young people every single day, and your representation for, for them, uh, from a human resources perspective, from- And your representation for them, from a human resources perspective, from a personal perspective, is one that I cherish, and I just appreciate all the work that you've done helping our teachers thus far. So, once again, thank you. To my beautiful family, I got them all here today. I... Oh, man. I'm so blessed, so blessed. And I just thank you guys for everything. As a man who's not perfect, you guys are one of the aspects of my team that is loyal regardless. And I wish everybody had that in their lives, that even when I'm not perfect, I know I always have somebody behind me. And that is my family. That is my sister, my brother-in-law, my auntie, my nieces, my nephews, and of course, Mr. and Mrs. Miller, my mom and my daddy. Thank you, guys. Though I know you guys have always been my biggest supporter over the past 40 years, there is one young lady who has loved me regardless and has always been in support of me through all of the tough times, and that is my beautiful, beautiful wife, Ms. Rachel Miller. I love you so much, gosh darn it, I can't even help myself. There's a larger story to me and Rachel's relationship, but I promise you this, that my dad was there to see it. It was love at first sight. As I was moving into the dorms, and I told my daddy, "Do you see this?" And know that that same feeling, that same fire that I felt the very first day that we were moving into those dorms, I still have today. And I thank you for all of your support during the long hours that we have here at these board meetings, to the opportunities for me to go out into the community and to be at public events, and you taking care of our family. I'm just very, very appreciative of your support in this process. So, thank you. I got another one of my big bros here, and Mr. Udaq Antuck, my man. I appreciate you, brother. So, if you guys don't mind, I'm going to hop into my speech, all right? Such a crybaby, goodness gracious. So, I'm four years in, with another four years granted to me by the public, which once again, I want to thank the public for their support and their continued trust in me to be the representative for the district of Western, Central, and Signal Hill. But we have a lot of work to do. As one of the staple school districts in our state, we have had a lot of success. From an academic standpoint, as we are one of those districts that are looked upon by our educational counterparts as one of the best in regards to supporting our students academically, also from an athletic standpoint, I jokingly have said this multiple times, there is only one school, or maybe two schools, that I've heard talked about continuously during our Olympics, and that was Long Beach Poly and Wilson, right? So, we're on a national stage when we talk about the type of athletes, the type of people we produce here in the Long Beach Unified School District. But as we continue to do this work, and we continue to have this proud history of doing great work, we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize that there have been a demographic of students that have underperformed for generations. And I have been proud to be a part of the team, a part of the conversation, and a part of the decision-making that is not only bringing that demographic to the forefront, but really putting in the work, putting in the elbow grease to make things happen. When the district made the decision of, first off, creating an equity and excellence policy, but then doubling down and making board goals, some that are emphasized in helping Black students in their academic achievements, I couldn't have been more proud of this. When it comes to our Black students in particular, as an African-American male who's come through our district, I can see the statistics that we look at on a daily basis, but for me, they're anecdotal. When I think about our statistics and the underperformance of some of our Black students, I think about young men in my neighborhood, like Anthony Dur, who was a man who had plenty of potential, he just needed support. I think about folks like Jermael Hale. He was a smart young man, great athlete, but once again, didn't have his mother or his father, because they were both incarcerated. I think about these young men, that if they were truly had the support to succeed, I think that they too could have been standing right here just as much as I have. So, to that, I've said it once, and I'll say it again, we got a lot of work to do. We are embarking on what my friends have called an aperture of opportunity, right? Where we have great leadership in place, we have the resources, and now it's time to do the work. And so, I'm going to implore my colleagues, I'm going to implore the staff at the Long Beach Unified School District, let's continue to push, let's continue to push against the status quo. Let's continue to fight for those young men and those young women who we know need a voice and just haven't had it for generations. Right now, we have a couple of things that are on our plate. One, as you've heard me state before, we have our Center of Black Student Success, which I am on pins and needles of excitement and looking forward to the opening of our center in coming months. We also have a series of board goals that we've held ourselves to. Along with that, we have some pretty big construction projects coming up. By pretty big, we're talking about, what, three-quarter of a billion dollars worth of construction? That is changing the environment of which our students are going to learn. And so, most of that work is happening in my district. And I'm sharing all of this to say that, no, that these are going to be my priorities as we go into these next four years in regards to making sure that campuses like Poly, campuses like Washington, have not only one of the best environments for success, but one of the brightest opportunities. So, that's not only just the academics, but we're talking, I mean, we're not just talking about the structure, but we're talking about the academics, and we're talking about the team that leads them. And so, as I conclude, I just want to thank you guys for your support in those efforts. And know that as I continue to make those decisions, these tough decisions, over the next four years, it is going to be with those things in mind, and just know that I would love to have your support as I go about this work. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Miller. We will continue with the agenda. So, item number 7.2, reorganization of the board, election of officers. And we will start with nominations for the Office of President. Would anybody like to make a nomination?
I would. I would nominate you to be president again of this board.
Second?
Any discussion? I am happy to accept the nomination, just... Should I do a, should I have our board secretary do a roll call vote? We'll do that. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And Member Miller?
Aye.
That passes, oh, I'm sorry, student, member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you, and- Thank you. It's a vote of confidence. I think what we heard here tonight was a rededication to the work that we've been doing, and it's been very inspiring to hear that. And I just want you to know that I will do everything I can to support you as my colleagues in doing that work. And we will go forward and have our noses to the grindstone, because our kids deserve it, and they deserve no less. Okay, next, we have the Office of Vice President. So, would somebody like to make a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Doug Ar.
Second?
And I'll start the discussion. Mr. Otto, do you accept that nomination?
Yep.
Great. In that case, I will have our board secretary take a roll call vote.
See if there are any other nominations.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Okay, next, we are at item number 7.3, approval of certification of signatures and signature authorities.
I would move approval.
Second?
Any discussion? We will have our board secretary take a roll call vote. Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Student member Arroyo, I'm sorry, Member Miller?
Aye.
Student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you. Now, we are at report of board members, and we will start with student member Arroyo.
So, this last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend and participate in the Toy Hackathon that was held at Sato. It was a really wonderful event, and there was a really great turnout by the community. So, for those who don't know what the Toy Hackathon is, is an event where people from the community are invited to come and to be led by Sato students to adapt a toy so it can be used by students or children with unique motor skills. So, the Sato students were leading them in the technical process of adapting the toy, and we had a lot of volunteers that were coming and helping to adapt these toys, and it was a really great learning experience for not only the Sato students in leading these volunteers, but also for the volunteers in being able to kind of get their hands dirty and do some STEM skills. Just very grateful for all those who came and participated, and I know that these toys will be given to different children in the district who it will fit their needs. And I'm so grateful for all those who came out and participated, and also for all those who put in so much hard work and effort into organizing this event. It's an annual event, I think it's been happening for about two or three years. So, once again, thank you so much for everyone who was involved in organizing this.
Thank you, Alana. It was a wonderful event, and thank you for your guidance, because there were a lot of families that were there with their kids. We had a scouting group, and there were so many volunteers that no one group or individual had more than one toy to work on, which was fabulous, absolutely fabulous. So, thank you for that report and for yourself and your classmates that supported it. Mr. Miller?
I'll be brief. I think I've sucked enough, sucked up enough air in this room, but I wanted to acknowledge another person who was in the room. Well, first off, from the Long Beach Unified School District standpoint, our partners in education are important. Obviously, that's OBCC, that's Cal State Long Beach, so to have multiple representatives from both entities is fantastic. And there is a trustee-elect sitting in the back here, who I'm very, very excited for their addition to the team, Dr. Annette Morton. And so, I wanted to give her a big round of applause. We got a lot of hard work ahead, and so, just looking forward to working with you. Thank you for coming out. And all things considered, thank you all for coming out today. This was, I think, a week ago, we talked about, or two weeks ago, we talked about what this space would look like, and we understood that as a board, we spend our time focusing on student outcome-focused governance. And though, yes, this has undertones of such, we also understood the celebratory nature of this aspect. And so, with its undertones, it was important to have it separate from our normal board business, and so, to have you all here in a celebratory fashion is very, very awesome. So, thank you.
Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll also be very brief. I'll start by congratulating my colleagues here, and also congratulating their friends, family, and loved ones. We know how important that support is to ensuring your success and our success as representatives and electeds. I'll say two things. I am looking forward to advancing the work that our two colleagues here referenced. And our priorities are very clear. We're here to uphold and represent the vision and values around student success of our communities. And the way that we've decided to do that as a board is to convert those priorities into goals. And so, I am looking forward to continuing to improve student outcomes, particularly for our Black students, for our most underserved students, for our students with disabilities, for our foster students, for our emerging bilinguals. I'm glad to see President Connolly here, because part of our task is to fulfill the promise that we've made to our local students, pun intended, the promise that we've made to our local students to support their dreams, their hopes, their aspirations, their values. That's community empowerment. And the only thing that is compulsory in our country is education. And so, we have a very clear roadmap for that. So, it's going to take the folks that are here supporting our efforts, and it's going to take all of our community members, those wonderful 63,000 students that we're here to serve, their families, their caregivers, to help us advance on those promises that we've made to them, the promises that our public education has made to them. So, I am really excited and looking forward to continuing to advance this work, not just with my colleagues here, but with the important contributions that our communities also make each and every day. So, it's a call in to our community members, to our stakeholders. Even when we have lost that trust of our communities, here's an opportunity for us to uphold that vision and those values. So, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
Okay. I want to thank you, everybody, for coming out, supporting me in this second term on the board. Really, really appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to the not easy but important work that we do. Last Saturday, my wife and I raced out of the board meeting that we had at off-site, and we were talking about student outcome-focused governance and our bylaws and the way we govern ourselves, and we went to Catalina. We went to Catalina because it was the 100th anniversary of the school in Catalina, which has a long history, not first with the Long Beach Unified School District, but shortly thereafter with that school district. And one thing that I learned while I was over there was that when the school was graduating its first class, I think there were 10 students, that 1,000 people showed up for that ceremony, all from Catalina. And it's just a testimony to public education. And it was so moving to be in a room with close to 300 people who were pretty much graduates of the Catalina school and were there to support it. Catalina is a very special place, especially in the winter. We got there in time to watch the football team, which had won a CIF championship for- We got there in time to watch the football team, which had won a CIF championship for eight-man football, ride around on the trucks, the fire trucks, and then light the Christmas tree. And it was just very magical, very magical, and reminded me again of how important education is to all of our students and to our communities. And it was very moving. And so, looking forward to what comes next, and thank you again to everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez.
Super brief. I just want to congratulate Mr. Miller, Mr. Otto, on your reelection, well deserved. And I look forward to continuing to collaborate and work with both of you in the best interests of our students. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll just mention, because we're in a public space, I want to thank Dr. Connolly, Al Austin, for their service. They are both retiring soon. And... And I just want to say, you have both done such wonderful work. You are people that I look up to because you serve your communities well. Dr. Connolly, you have been such a champion for Cal State Long Beach and the students. You are always positive and bright and a wonderful partner for us. Mr. Austin, you have been such a wonderful community leader, and we're happy to have had both of you as partners, not just for the school district, but in the community at large. So, we will move on to our super... No report, okay? Then, without any objections, we'll adjourn this meeting. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is this coming Wednesday, December 18.